We will call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting November 5th, 2024. First item is those that are able, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Remove the agenda. Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Item number three, tab one, is County Ditch One. Mr. Mandelfeld, welcome. Please join us and identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. Mark Mandelfeld, Property and Environmental Resources. Here to set the hearing date for County Ditch One. Background on the drainage system, County Ditch One watershed is approximately 2,600 acres in size. It's located in McPherson Township. A petition for improvement was received in February of this year. In April, the Drainers Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl of ISG as the project engineer. Mr. Brandl was ordered to prepare a preliminary survey report. Drainage staff collected that report in September. Today's request, at today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainers Authority, we're requesting the Drainers Authority approve the findings in order, setting a hearing date for the preliminary survey report for November 19th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Discussion. I'm assuming this be a nine o'clock hearing?
Correct.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Hearing is set for November 19th, 2024, and the findings in order is also approved.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Agenda item number four, tab number two, Anti-Heroine Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Sheriff, to join us, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Both the Sheriff's Office and the Task Force have separate joint powers agreements with the BCA. Anti-Heroine Task Force, what it does is reimburses both agencies with any overtime costs accrued for working fentanyl, heroin, death investigations, and trafficking investigations. The reason they're two separate is because we're the fiscal agent for the Task Force as well. So I recommend approval of the JPAs. We've been, this will be, I think, the fourth year.
And can we do them both together, Bob, or would we like to do them separately?
I think you can do both of these together.
I'll move approval.
Second. You got a motion and a second. Discussion. This is on both agreements. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Both joint powers agreements are approved. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, tab number three is Finance. Ask you ladies that come forward and identify yourself for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lisa Malinsky, Finance Director.
And Candice Sonic, Assistant Finance Director.
We have four policies that we have updated. We'd like to just tell you a little bit about each. I don't know if you want to approve these separately or together?
I would recommend these policies be approved individually.
Okay. The first policy is our electronic funds transfer policy. There is a statute which requires you approve that annually, that delegates that electronic funds transfers be designated to the chief financial officer or the officers designee.
Okay. Any questions? Clarifying questions?
Come on, Mr. Sheriff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. That policy is approved.
Thank you. The next policy is the capital asset policy. We have actually updated that for the last three years. There's been different accounting standard updates. First it was leases, then last year was SPITAs, information, subscription agreements, and this year there's a new implementation. We have thresholds. For example, personal property, we only capitalize things over 5,000. We are now, they're saying you need to look at things in the aggregate, so you should look at like the whole, what you're doing for all PCs instead of individual PCs. So that's a new standard that we need to look at. So we have changed in this policy. We're increasing the personal property instead of 5,000 up to 10,000, and when we're looking at aggregate, we'd like to look at things that total over 150,000. So that's our update for that policy.
Any clarifying questions?
Nope.
What are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The capital asset policy is updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that we are looking for updating is a procurement policy. Earlier this year in April, the OMB issued revised guidance for federal financial assistance, and in this update, there were significant changes made to the two CFR, Part 200, known as the Uniform Guidance. This guidance contains various updates intended to reduce burden by using plain language, clarifying provisions, and increasing various thresholds. We also incorporated some of the changes from state statute, since our last time our policy was approved, and added some provisions to better define the procurement process, and those would be our main changes to the policy.
Any clarifying questions? What are your wishes?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The procurement policy is updated.
Thank you. Our last policy change is the investment policy, and this is going to allow us to purchase CDs from credit unions due to a change in Minnesota Statute 118A, and these are insured by the National Credit Union Administration, similar to FDIC insurance. So that is the main difference there.
What's the limit on that then, Candace?
250,000.
250. They haven't upped that, huh? That just seems...
No.
Money in a lot of banks to standard that threshold.
Right, right.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Investment policy is updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You too.
We are at agenda item number six, tab number four, Public Works. Mr. Tilges, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
Ryan Tilges, Blue Earth County Engineer and Public Works Director. A handful of action items for your consideration this morning. The first is consideration of MinDOT contract number 1058209, federal participation in preliminary engineering for state project 007609015, which is a replacement of bridge number 07542 on County State Aid Highway Number 9. This agreement authorizes us to utilize Federal Highway Administration ER funds for the engineering work to design the bridge, do any remaining survey, geotechnical investigation, et cetera, and collect the permits. Basically get us to a construction documents package ready for bidding, again, for the emergency bridge replacement project on County State Aid Highway 9 directly upstream of the Rapid End Dam. I would ask that you consider action item number one and two together, because the packet per MinDOT's requirements also includes a certification resolution, which does require a notary public seal, so it may require wet ink signatures in your packet. So I request or recommend approval of the MinDOT contract and the attached resolution.
I'll move to approve both.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Both the contract and the resolution are approved.
All right. Our next action item is consideration of final payment for state aid project number 007616035. This is for County State Aid Highway 16, from the La Sura River to County State Aid Highway 90, completed by RNG Construction Company. Original contract amount, $3,451,582.12. Final amount paid to date, final contract payment amount of $38,053.28, for a total final contract amount of $3,805,327.70. I believe we had a large, a couple of large county tiles that had to be replaced on the project that were unanticipated that resulted in a significant increase. Additionally, we also decided to extend the bituminous pavement final lift down to the bridge to avoid kind of the bumps and just to fill that curb and gutter section in. So effectively running the project up on this, cost up on this project, but taking it away from the future overlay project. So just moving the money to this year instead of next year. With that being said, I would recommend final payment approval to RNG Construction.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The final payment is approved.
All right, thank you. The next action item, number four, in your packet, is consideration of an addendum for petition for detachment from the city of Eagle Lake to Luray Township for County State Aid Highway 27 road right of way. This is, and Mr. and Mrs. Gensel, who are the folks requesting this, are in the audience and available to answer questions on this. However, effectively, my understanding is this was the land that was planned to be the racetrack slash driving course on the north side of Eagle Lake, was annexed into city limits. That project fell flat and is no longer moving forward. The Gensels have purchased the northern property, so what they're requesting is, when we went through and constructed County State Aid Highway 27, a portion of the road right of way as outlined in the packet was annexed into city limits, and with that, they're asking that, for the purchase of their property to be cleared up, that this be detached from annexation and be put back into the township. So it's effectively the road right of way abutting the parcel that they purchased. So the city of Eagle Lake has already signed off on it. The township has already signed off on it as well, so they just need this addendum for the county concurrent so that they can finalize this action. So I would request approval of the addendum that is included in the board's packet.
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
All right, thank you. Action item number five, consideration of the Monarch Butterfly Candidate Conservancy Agreement. We've, you know, obviously talked about this at length. WSB has completed the application. We talked about adding more roadways to our system. After further discussion, it was determined that was unnecessary. We are meeting our requirements. Adding additional roadways doesn't give us the flexibility we thought it would.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
If we want to do a project on one of these roads, we're going to keep those other roads as back-of-pocket roadways, and all we have to do is, in that year that we plan to do this work, we just need to notify the group managing this of that, that if we're going to, say, do a project out on County Road 166 this year, County Road 166 isn't one of our adopted acres, and County Road 27 is, and then we can go back to it being one of our adopted. So we can move lands around within the program to facilitate projects. We don't have to have a bunch of extra acreage because it just, it doesn't provide the benefit we had initially thought it would. So with that being said, we didn't add any additional roads to the most recently reviewed map that was provided to the county board, so this provides the current proposed. This is the full application, and it would require county board approval and signature. We would get that submitted. My understanding is, based on the WSB consultant who's been working with us, sitting in on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service calls about the Monarch Butterfly, it is very likely that it's going to be listed as either threatened or endangered. So this is hopefully going to pay off dividends for us in the future. With that, I would recommend approval of the conservancy agreement.
Go prove.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion.
So, Mr. Chair, my understanding is then that we'll be able to move some property around, so if we have a landowner that wants to mow their ditch in front of their house, we can move it to a different spot.
Correct, and we only adopted a percentage of the total road right of way. We didn't adopt it also, trying to give ourselves even flexibility within that. If we adopt 85 or 90 percent instead, it gives us those, that leniency to say, yep, it's fine that you mow your ditch out in your yard area.
Okay, so that's good to hear. I'm happy to hear that part of the policy. So how does that get executed?
Well, it's a self-enforced program. They are coming around checking our acreage. I mean, they might maybe do an audit, but as long as we've got justification and explanation of it, and we're, we're doing self-reporting on it, I don't...
Okay, so as a landowner, I don't need to notify you and say, I'm going to mow my ditch, or what's the procedure here?
Well, we will send out a letter to landowners stating that this, that your, the road has been adopted. Here's the limitations on it.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have to put something in there, you know, landowners who maintain the grass in front of their homes for yard purposes are exempted or are permitted because we've made an allowance for that. It's really, the primary limitation is going to be on baling and haying the right of ways on these roads. And again, we targeted these roads purposefully because they're roads that typically don't see significant or any baling or haying because of narrow rights of ways, steep slopes, things like that.
But I've been getting comments about, well, I want to mow my ditch yet.
Yeah. No ATV signs, things like that. We'll have to probably put up at the beginning and ends of the ditches.
Okay.
It will, it's a new process, and I don't have all the answers. We'll have to adapt as we go, but again, we can opt out at any time, but if the butterfly does become threatened and endangered, it's going to significantly impact our ability to work within our rights of way. So by setting aside a small 5% to 8% of it for conservation, and we can continue to do what we need to do.
In the rest of the area.
And reconstruct the rest of the system.
Is the state highway system under that too? Because we got like eighty-three and twenty-two.
Not our, not our rights of way. So we're only looking at the county road and park right of way.
Is the state looking at this type of...
I am not sure. I know like Excel Energy is opting into it on a lot of their lands, and some of the utility companies are looking at this. I believe the state in areas is looking at this, but I can't speak. I haven't asked them what their intention is. They've got a lot more people to get a permit every time they turn around than we do, so.
And we have plenty.
So I'm looking at the map, starting on page 102. So we have enrolled right of ways, which are the red lines, and then we have adopted acres, the orange roads in this case. So are all the red lines, those county roads, are they enrolled in this program?
Yep. All of our roads and parks and pits are enrolled.
Okay.
The adopted acres are the roads where we're saying there's the ones we're going to place limitations on. Those are the 5% to 8% of our system that are going to be set aside, and we're going to put restrictions on mowing, haying, spraying activities. So actually, we can still continue to spot spray, just like we do for, not just weed control.
And the adopted acres, we did not adopt the entire ditch, or is it just kind of a total acres?
It's in the calculation sheet, which I'm going to find it, but there's a calculation. There's a more detailed spreadsheet that I don't believe is in the actual packet, but if you dig into the numbers in the spreadsheet, that's where it says if a road, say, has 100 acres, and we're adopting 90% of those of the available right of way, so we take out the road and the shoulders, we take, if it's 100-foot right of way envelope, and we take out 40-foot for road top and shoulders, we can do that, and then maybe we're taking out another 5% or 10% off of the total remaining right of way to allow for those people to mow their yard areas.
Okay, I don't want to talk about yard acres, though. What I want to talk about is the question that will get asked, and I'm curious if it's a yes or no. Can I still mow one swath between the ditch and my crop to help keep the noxious weeds out of my crop?
You should be able to, yes. I mean, it's also, again, this, the regulatory of this is the county monitoring it.
Right. And are we, are we regulating the county mowing, or are we trying to regulate private landowners?
We're trying to keep an eye on both, but we also acknowledge that, and then again, why we've only adopted certain amounts of the total acreage because we knew that was a concern. It's, it's the full mow-out that's really the problem, right, or that that's going to be an issue for us, or the intrusion of, say, and again, fortunately, we don't get a lot of ATV traffic on our trails, things like that nature. So, does that answer your question?
But understand that, I mean, we're not necessarily getting five out of five stars for controlling weeds in our ditches, either from landowners or from the townships. We hear about that at the township officers, you know, why, we take care of our weeds, why can't you type thing. So my question is, I understand that it's got to do with us mowing as a county, but can the individual landowner either mow it for noxious weeds or for weed control, or still hay and graze it? And you're saying to me, if it's an orange road, the answer should really be no, and our explanation be because you really haven't, nobody's been mowing it or grazing it before.
And because we've adopted it, or we just reconstructed it, and we have all the right of way feet title. But yes, the orange roads are going to be a no, and they should talk to us before they do it. The red roads, business as usual.
Okay. That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Are we ready to vote? We have a motion, right? Yeah, we do have a motion.
A motion and a second.
Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The capital asset policy is updated. Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
Thank you. Good discussion. Information updates, projects. County State Highway thirteen from one sixty-nine to Kasaw one that we started in the fall of 2023. Work's been substantially complete. The road was reopened to traffic on October eighteenth. On County State Highway eleven from the west line to Kasaw six, work is substantially complete and the road has been open to traffic since September twenty-fourth. Crews are still out there working on fixing an incorrectly installed tile line and some final punch list items. On the overlay contract has been completed. All work. The Kasaw two box culverts on the north county line. All work has been substantially complete and reopened to traffic. There is some minor grading on the east culvert. Needs to be completed yet. Obviously too wet to do that now. So they'll be wrapping that up in the coming weeks. County Road one forty-six Bridge Replacement Project, all work is substantially complete and the road was reopened to traffic on October twenty-second. County State Highway five from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue, the open house meeting is scheduled for the nineteenth of November from four to six p.m. At the Public Works Department. I believe you all should have just received a notification for the open house. Design is progressing well. Landowner coordination is also happening for high impact properties. Kasaw fifteen and twenty-eight in St. Clair, working with the city engineer at Bolton and Mink, has completed preliminary layout for the road and the city utilities. We are coordinating intersection geometry as well as the road width. So we're evaluating what widths fit what we've historically done and probably evaluating two different widths for those segments. Our normal has been forty feet. However, I think we understand when there's a lot more parking happening, similar to downtown Vernon Center. So especially probably for the segment from twenty-eight to the north to the west, we're going to meet with the city and talk about likely a little bit wider section in there to facilitate parking. We are also going to be looking at intersection geometry and see if there's any minor impacts to adjacent landowners that we can do to improve safety or site distances, things of that nature. The County State Highway sixty-nine Tunnel, Mini Opah Creek, where they were scouring out a big hole underneath the footings that we added as a, a, a emergency contract last fall. That work has been completed. Conditions dried up. So my guys are happy. That's a heck of a hike up and down that hill if you ever want to go.
Go splunking in the tunnel there.
Yeah. It's, uh, it's quite a hike. So that, that's been done and there contractors pulling out of there. County Road one seventy-four, one seventy-seven box culverts completed, opened to traffic. County Road one fifty-seven box culverts opened to traffic. Still requires some grading work around the culvert. That was all of our construction for this year. Kasaw ten from a west county line to Kasaw twenty, plans are approved. Right of way acquisition's underway. We hope to bid it in spring of twenty-five. Kasaw forty slope repair project. Project design is nearly complete. Work will resume for the project memorandum soon. And then on Kasaw ten from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge replacement, with Seth is moving towards sixty percent plan design. We've got a slew of bridge and box culvert projects ready for next year. County State Highway fourteen, maybe I'll just kind of state all of them that are in a similar condition. County State Highway fourteen, County State Highway twenty-six, both have been funded at fifty percent from state aid. Easements are needed. Those are going to be bid late winter or early spring. Kasaw twenty-nine is a combination of federal and state funds. That's contract to Minwa already. They're going to start replacement in spring of twenty-five. County Road one thirty-nine and one fifty-six project is funded one hundred percent using state aid bridge bonds, at least for the eligible items. Easements are needed and we're going to bid those late winter or early spring. And then County Road one eighty-four, we purchased the box culvert, excuse me, using local funds. We still need easements and then we'll bid it in late winter or early spring. So we'll kind of get into the finances of all of those different culvert and bridge products here a little bit later. Maintenance activity updates. Greystone is working on the building in the Lake Crystal Salt Shed. So putting that up right now. That was a budgeted item, obviously. Our county staff, while that's happening, is installing new metal siding on the coal storage building in Lake Crystal. So that site will be looking really nice with our newer shop and, uh, new salt shed and cleaned up storage building. Recent moisture is going to allow us to get out and blade the gravel roads. We've been waiting for that. Obviously fielding calls on the need to get out there and blade the gravel. But if we go do it when it's as dry as it was, it actually makes things worse. Crews are continuing to work on shouldering throughout the county. They'll begin repair work on the Red Jacket Valley Park walking trail near the river once the Min DNR permit is approved. Same situation for the repairs at the east side of the Wildwood Park, waiting on the DNR permit to complete those repairing drainage blowout. Crews will continue tile repairs, driveway installations, as long as weather permits. And just kind of a fun note, our maintenance operators will be visiting area elementary schools with their tandem truck and doing a winter weather talk with the school kids. So.
They love that.
Yeah, that's pretty neat.
I like that.
Was happy to hear that.
Loves a big truck.
Big trucks, big yellow trucks. In your packet, I provided a summary of all of the different bridge project funding as an update, just to show the board where we're at with respect. We had a robust bonding bill in 2023. And seeing that coming or anticipating that coming, we had a, quite a list of bridges in the hopper, ready to go. And we also added some more to design and were able to get those designed and paid for on the backend. So all in, we had, you know, obviously you can see all the projects. I believe that's ten projects funded wholly or partially using federal or state aid dollars. So of the total, well, the, the number gets skewed because we've got obviously a big project in Kasaw thirteen where the bridge is in there. But in all in, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal money that was competitively applied for, over four million dollars of state bridge dollars. And then we combine that with our regular state aid, local option sales tax or local funds, as well as a little bit of city dollars for twenty-four million dollars worth of work. So we got nearly five million dollars of external bridge funds in the last two years.
That's great.
Additionally, uh, we also got the one point five million dollars of Local Road Improvement Program Grant, which was another competitive application that we were able to use on Victory Drive. And we rolled over the local funds from that. And that's why you're seeing so many box culvert projects being completed now out in the rural parts of the county. So I actually was able to testify to the legislature. Maybe I've talked about that. But that even though that one and a half million dollars of LRIP came into Blueworth County, went into the urban area of Mankato, we turned around and put the local money to work out in the rural parts of the county. We will, just, just for public record, we have a road tour scheduled. The bus is anticipated to be here at about ten thirty out front. We'll be touring the completed and upcoming road and bridge construction projects. A copy of the agenda and itinerary has been distributed to the board and to administration. We'll be leaving the courthouse at about ten thirty, making our route on a transit bus and then stopping for lunch at the Thunder Barn Grill at about eleven forty-five. And we should arrive back at the courthouse at about two thirty. Happy to answer any questions on that. Hearing done. One remaining item is the Rapid Inn Dam. Update, I'll try to keep this moving. Again, another busy month chasing, chasing a lot of items on the dam. And we'll just go in chronological order with respect to the bridge. On October fourth, we submitted a revised project memorandum with environmental clearance attachments to MinDOT for approval. Project memorandum was approved on October seventh. That was the first step in getting the project authorized. On the fourth, I also participated in a conference call with Chris Novak from MinDOT to evaluate the preliminary engineering service scope. And that was, that evaluation led into the establishment of a disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of ten percent set by the MinDOT Office of Civil Rights. On the twenty-fifth of October, we finally received authorization by MinDOT, hence the agreement that was just approved. This authorization was delayed due to the federal fiscal system being offline and then subsequently required FHWA approval. So I had actually, when I wrote the proposal to send out, had set a target date at the end of the month for them to provide the proposals back to us. I didn't get it sent out till the day that I wanted them back. So we lost a full month there. So on the twenty-eighth, we solicited for proposals for qualification based selection for four consultant engineering firms for design of the bridge replacement. Project will also be publicly advertised in accordance with federal requirements. We're targeting receiving proposals on November twenty-sixth and we'll bring the recommendation agreement for the county board consideration in mid-December after MinDOT clears the disadvantaged business enterprise goal and does a pre-award audit clearance. Again, this is a qualification based selection process where the firms provide a proposal without price and the county negotiates the rates and costs of the desired firm after their qualifications are reviewed. This is open. We did send it to four firms, but it is open to others to submit proposals on because we are required to advertise it publicly. We'll move on to the dam. Going back in time again, rewind to October first. We participated in a meeting with the FERC, FEMA, DNR and Core, discussed several topics. The FERC verified that they don't anticipate requiring an annual dam safety report this year, understanding the situation that the county's in. We discussed the importance of coordination between all of these agencies so that we aren't in a situation where we've got environmental documents completed for federal purposes and something's missing. And we've had these calls continuing now for, on a biweekly basis. So myself and our staff and Bob's been sitting in on those as well. So I appreciate the participation. We discussed the license render, again, knowing we need to provide a NEPA, basically draft NEPA documents for the FERC's narrative for their documentations. We've effectively got to provide the, the body of those documents and then the FERC will carry it through for, for the dam surrender, doing the full federal NEPA process. We also had discussed the extents of the river stabilization. The county and DNR have to discuss this farther. But really, everybody's priority is on dam removal and stabilizing that section of river at the dam. On October third, we held our weekly meeting with BAR, discussed the river channel analysis. Work will resume as soon as the aerial survey is completed later this fall. It's actually, I believe, scheduled should take place this week or next week. Still waiting for the leaves to kind of fall out. There's a late leaf out this year, I would say. We discussed the FERC's render notice and the basis of the, the scope of work for BAR. On October seventh, we had a biweekly meeting with FEMA staff and discussed requests for qualification based proposals. We have a lot of, we had a lot of questions on this. There were some processes associated with their socio-economic contracting that are very unclear for federal procurement and puts a lot of the onus on us to try to check in and make sure we're doing it right. Whereas when we go through, I, I never thought I would appreciate the MinDOT Office of Civil Rights as much as I do until I had to go through this and try to, try to sort through this. All of the things that they do where they set the goal for you and require it and then they review the contractors and, and have all of these lists already determined, that's not available for the FEMA or these other federal solicitations. So you've got to go on all these websites and sort through piles of data and try to dig and find, find relevant people and solicit to them. It's, it's very confusing. So we're trying to build the, the best case we can that we're doing our best and looking into it, ensuring that we're doing our due diligence and, and just trying to get as many clearances from FEMA as possible with the limited feedback we do get. On this, what else? We, we did question how the hurricane relief, relief efforts are going to impact the county. Delaney with the FEMA stated that both she and Seth, who's working with the county on the road issues, will remain dedicated to the dam project. However, there may be immediate funding needs that could be shifted to other areas and potentially delayed compensation. So we are very fortunate that we have two full-time FEMA staff that are actually not contract employees dedicated to the dam out of the Chicago Regional Office. Conversations with, with them, with other federal agencies and with our congressional delegation has, has made us very appreciative because as we've expressed frustration before, there have been several instances where the previous time, I think I dealt with four different project managers. So you'd kind of get one to agree with what we were doing and you'd start writing it up and then somebody else would come in and have a different opinion on it. You'd have to convince them or change and it's, it's a kind of chasing your tail. So we're very lucky and fortunate to have dedicated full-time FEMA people helping us on this. On October seventh, we had our first biweekly meeting with the FERC, FEMA and Core and discussed several items in the packet. The county will be responsible for the state EAW for the dam removal as the project proposer. The Department of Natural Resources can be of assistance. We're not sure if the engineering cost for the FERC surrender and the EAW is going to be FEMA reimbursable, but it's critical path to be completed. The Core level of involvement is unknown at this time. If we're not pursuing a massive river restoration project, their role may be very limited. We will continue river channel monitoring, coordinating with the Core and the DNR. The Core was going to check into other potential dam removal funding. He did follow up on that. There's really not anything that's viable at this point in time. As soon as I get a lead, I do chase into those. I talk with Fish and Wildlife. We'll get into that here and others. But there's not big pots of money out there for projects like this. On October seventh, I spoke with the DNR about their upcoming state bonding request. Rapid Inn Dam will be a top DNR priority. A better removal cost estimate is needed. We're going to struggle to get that in time. They needed that actually by mid-October. So they're, to procure this work takes some time for FEMA reimbursement. Effectively later on, the following week, I spoke with Jason and they put a ten million dollar request in to the bonding bill for the Rapid Inn Dam for repair of the west embankment for interim repair. And then their intention is to provide or request additional funds in the future to assist, help us assist with the dam removal and river restoration project as part of the state dam safety bonding request. But because of their deadline to get it in this year, they, they just put a number in there to help us with that kind of stabilization in the circumstance that FEMA won't pay for it. On October seventh, administration and I discussed that previous conversation. We agreed it was critical to proceed with securing an engineering agreement for preparation of documents for the FERC surrender and the EAW preparation due to the critical path nature of it. Again, I want to emphasize this may not be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. However, time is, at times, much more valuable than the, the engineering reimbursement. We've all seen the, the impacts of inflation and what a year delay to a project like this could do. On October tenth, FEMA conducted a four hour long site investigation and follow up with eleven FEMA staff, two HSEM staff and eight county staff. We did a site tour, a subsequent meeting at the Public Works Department, answered several questions, discussed funding eligibility and repair extents. Effectively, repair extents are going to be adjacent to the county park and at the dam, not the upstream river basin, which I think we've already knew, but we received more verification of that. It's really only four improved properties. They'll conduct an alternative project analysis for this. So required for that funding to be used to remove the dam, they have to conduct that analysis. We will need to coordinate with floodplain manager. Again, we'll be doing the EAW. Inventory of damages will be completed. Debris must be removed within the, for six months of the flood event for it to be FEMA eligible. And permanent work is supposed to be completed within eighteen months. I think we all know that's not going to happen. So we'll need an HSEM extension and then likely a FEMA time extension, which we had done previously for the other money. October tenth, I spoke with BAR Engineering about the scope of work for the FERC license surrender and EAW. On the eleventh, Jason Boyle told me that they were going to include the ten million in the state bonding request on behalf of the Department of Natural Resources. On October twelfth, FEMA provided a response to several questions related to procurement of professional engineering services. We have to act in accordance with our procurement policy, state law and federal laws. And again, this is another qualification based solicitation process, public and competitive, but we're going to also directly solicit to a few firms that dam, dam engineering is very specialized and, and modeling a river channel is not something that the average firm has the capability of doing. On October fifteenth, I spoke with Delaney Walsh from FEMA and discussed several items. Again, seeking clarity on the scope and the, the socio-economic contracting damages list. We force, force them in by the November first deadline. And then they, we ultimately provided them with a copy of our procurement policy. Staff has been working on responding to a massive public data request received on October fifteenth related to the dam requesting ten years worth of information. This can be very time consuming for Public Works Department staff. So we're probably going to end up having a staffer on this for the better part of a month. So these things are very frustrating, just in the resources that they draw and with limited benefit they provide. On this, October sixteenth, Nathan Wallerstedt from the Core provided an email regarding dam removal funding. He followed up with several other funds available, allocated for, or expended. Most of the funds have been expended. So there's not really a lot of opportunities. He provided a possible opportunity with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and provided me with a contact. October twenty-first, by, twenty-first, we had a biweekly meeting with FEMA. You can see the discussion. You can see the discussions, they are just keeping the ball rolling. FEMA will review our professional services scope. That'll take seven to 10 business days for their review. On October 21st, we participated in a bi-weekly meeting, again, with those three agencies and really started to dive into the NEPA document requirements and the EAW. And on the 21st, we also met, Bob, Josh, and myself met with representatives from offices of Senator Klobuchar, Smith, and Congressman Finstad and discussed the dam and bridge. Discussed whether there's a potential path to influence dam removal as directed path in lieu of an alternate project. Still uncertain on that. They're going to speak with their DC counterparts on the possibility of a direct appropriation. We had subsequent conversation on that yesterday and were able to provide more information directly to the DC counterparts via ZER. And I understand yesterday afternoon, they had a meeting with FERC, FEMA, and the Core regarding the dam. So we're eager to hear the outcome of that meeting, but it's, it's probably likely we'll still have to pursue the alternate project cost estimation, but we're at least trying to push to expedite this as quickly as possible and make it as common senseful as possible. On October 22nd, I sent a draft request for qualification-based to FEMA for their review. On the 25th, I sent a letter to FEMA requesting verification of immediate threat for FEMA funding eligibility for the West Embankment interim stabilization. So this is that BAR engineering memorandum. Three to four weeks ago, I effectively had to put a letter on it saying why this is a threat. Please consider this, please verify that this is eligible for funding. Otherwise, if we were to just do it, we would risk it not being eligible for FEMA reimbursement. And as you remember, that was a significant price tag. It may ultimately be part of the permanent repairs, but the concern is how much more land do we lose between now and then with future flood events? And then on October 25th, the County Administrator approved a change order agreement for the Rapid End Hydroelectric Project Exemption Surrender for Preparation, Submittal of the Necessary FERC Documentation for the Surrender Application Revision, and EAW Development and Implementation with BAR Engineering. That concludes my report. Up to the date of the report, obviously, we've had numerous subsequent conversations that'll be detailed in the next report I provide.
So I'll ask the first question, and I'll start with Bob, and then I'll ask you too, Ryan. What, I don't know whether it's what percentage or how many hours per week are we investing in this process that really wasn't a year ago included in our strategic plan or our budget or timelines or anything else? What are, what are we, what is the county investing just in time, resources that, I don't want to say what it's costing us, what it's investing in, whatever, but I mean, I think we need to recognize that just by this board report, it's taking a lot of time and there's a lot of other things, I don't want to say you're not doing, but somebody else is having to do while you're busy doing this. And I guess I'd start with Bob.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that question. It's hard to put a definitive number on it, but it is a substantial lift that we're faced with. Certainly Ryan and his folks are spending considerable time on this and he and I have talked about the fact that he no longer has the time to focus on kind of traditional county engineer functions. And so we're relying on other staff to pick up some of that load, but clearly not as much attention is going to our typical road construction and maintenance activities because of this situation. We are trying to utilize the consultants that Ryan has talked about here as quickly as we can because that will allow more time to be focused here, but then you get this 10-year data request and that's not something you can farm out to a consultant. That requires staff to go through file cabinets full of documents to pull the data, figure out whether it's public data, if it is not fully public data, then to redact the data. And so, you know, that just takes away from the regular work as well. And so I know Ryan is putting in many, many hours on this. I've participated, but it's getting to the point where the technical speak is kind of beyond my value-added participation, but I want to continue to support the effort of staff and be available. And we're having to make some decisions a little bit on the fly and so I appreciate that Ryan is providing these detailed updates to the board so that you folks have some clarity on the volume of work going on and the direction we're heading.
Thank you. Ryan, any thoughts?
I think it's fair to say probably half of my week is dedicated to the dam and/or the bridge. It is indeed taking away from my ability to do my normal job. Some of those things can be handed down, some of those things are just having to be flat-out ignored. And it's tactically deciding what does not get my attention. So, you know, I think we talked about the, last week at the work session, the traffic study at the intersection, I just didn't have time to participate in it like I normally would like to and be able to steer that process. So that and several other functions, you know, some of the, the construction aspects have been handed over. We still need to plow roads, we still need to purchase equipment, we still need to reconstruct our road and bridge infrastructure. And so I have told Bob, and I'll be perfectly frank, there are things that are likely to be missed because of the impact of the amount of work that the dam is putting on our, myself and our staff. And I apologize in advance for that. I don't like to make mistakes if, if they do happen. I'll own up to them, but this is putting a tremendous amount of stress on, on our staff. I know, not only myself, but you know, Steph and Nick, Mike have also been very involved in this, Chad as well. So trying to, I mean, I'm trying to keep as many people in the loop as possible so that we can spread that workload around. There's still a lot of requests for site visits and needing access and things of that nature, so it's very time-consuming. The coordination with all of these different agencies, my hope is, and again, I dislike using the word hope because it's, it's not a tangible thing. My hope is that by the time we get to, say, New Year and we have contracts in place for the bridge design and for design and engineering services for the dam, that some of this, this coordination work can be handed off to those consultants and asking them to take more of a leadership role within it and then providing information back to us and keeping us in the loop on critical conversations. But even just, you know, yesterday during our coordination call with the FERC, FEMA, and Core regarding the NEPA documents and EAW, I told BAR, you guys set an agenda, I'll do the introduction, you guys run the meeting. Because this is really, you guys are the ones that need this information. I don't, this is out of my wheelhouse or beyond my breadth and depth at least. So I don't think it's going to, that's not going to magically take away all the work. This is, this for the next four to five years, whatever it's going to take, is going to be a tremendous demand on our staff. And there's just only so much that can be done without perhaps hiring another full-time employee to just specifically be in charge of a dam project. You know, that's probably the other option that would yield us the best results, but then how do you get somebody up to speed on something like that? And do they know which levers to pull and buttons to push to get results? So we're, we're also going to be looking at likely a less active approach for, say, federal funding applications, solicitations, and things of that nature. We just, we can't inundate our staff with more work. We'll continue to push for the state bridge bonds and those projects that are a little bit more automatic and are kind of within our normal means of implementation. But going after, you know, LARCH, there was just another IAJA grant, I think, I forget the acronym for which one it was, but RACE, it was a RACE grant opportunity. It's at the point where I don't have time or the ability to look at those and think about projects and fill out applications for those things. So we are missing that aspect. We're going to be more just focusing on our core work with the funds that we have available for the road and bridge system and trying to get some of the state dollars that are more easily accessible, but a lot of our energy and focus is on the dam and the bridge replacement project. So it is taking away.
Other questions on anything of the course?
Just a comment, it makes me tired thinking about what you're doing.
If I have here by the end of all of this and it's not all great, I'll be happy, I guess.
Yeah, we know all that.
Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate your time and all of the whole team's time making, making things work because we've got a lot of balls in here, no doubt.
Thank you.
We go to agenda item number seven, tab five. County Attorney up here. Mr. McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I know you've got plenty on your plate this morning. If you have any questions about the report, I'm more than happy to answer them. One thing I just did want to pass along is on our overdose death homicide cases we've been experiencing because of some new case log and whatnot, we actually end up needing more expert witnesses to come in. So if we have a fentanyl-related overdose death case, conservatively, I'm going to estimate that that's going to cost us $40,000 to bring in the amount of experts that we need. The technology, you know, they say technology increases twofold, doubles every 18 to 24 months. Well, a few years ago, when we had mixed drug toxicity cases, we weren't able to prosecute those cases a few years ago. We are able now because of the technology. And if we get a mixed drug toxicity case, which most of them are, we have a handful pending, it's going to be a heck of a lot more than $40,000 to bring in the experts that we need to bring in. So I just wanted to bring, put that, bring that to your attention and make sure that you're aware of that. So, and we'll do our best to try to stay within budget. Questions, concerns, comments?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
And item number eight is Administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board minutes for October 22nd.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The October 22nd minutes are approved as printed.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bills are approved.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have a few informational items for the Board's attention today. First is filling of an Assistant County Attorney, one position in our Civil and Juvenile Human Services area of the County Attorney's Office. And then we had a resignation of a Recording Coordinator in our Property and Environmental Resources Department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, we did fill a part-time Correctional Officer position in the jail. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board might have on that activity.
It's a short one.
It is. It's good to see that things have settled down a little bit in our HR area. Item number nine in your packet then is a memorandum regarding change orders at All Seasons Arena. As Board will recall, that this will be kind of a ongoing practice for the near term in terms of the construction work happening at All Seasons Arena, but have a few change orders for consideration. Again, these have been approved by the Joint Powers Board, but because of the way that Joint Powers agreement is drafted, we have reached a financial level that requires the partners to weigh in as well. And so the first item is a change order number eight to Metcon under Trade Package 1A, amount of $8,616. It does include a decrease for some tile grout being switched out for a more standard grout product, and then an increase for some installation of fire-treated wood platforms around the skate treadmill, and then an increase for modification to the north wall of the new West Vestable. And so that's one change order. The next change order is number five for the Malteer Mechanical. This is for $4,900. It's an increase for the change of material from a fabric duct to a steel duct and rerouted in, in the dryland training room area. And then the last change order, number five, for Lake Town Electric. That includes an increase for the replacement of an electrical panel breaker for the skate treadmill. This is required under current electrical code. So the total of those change orders are $13,930.12, still leaving us with just slightly over $92,000 in contingency funds.
Okay, let's get a motion and second, then we'll do discussion. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Vance?
Can these all go together or can we censor separate entities? Do we have?
I think since we're approving it, to really kind of confirm what the Joint Powers Board is approving, I think it's fine to include them all as one.
Sounds good.
Okay, are we clear then that covers all of them? Is that good with the motion? Other discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The change orders are all approved.
Tab 10 in your packet is a memo regarding the Public Works Facility Bid Package Number Two. And so today, we're presenting the remaining bids from Bid Package Two that were received on October 9th. The more time-sensitive bids from Bid Package Two were presented to the Board on October 22nd, and these that you're considering today are the remaining bids that were received and we're now recommending for approval. The total of the remaining bids to be approved today is $4,237,216.50. We also have been able to evaluate some of the alternates, and so we have some recommendations there as well. Alternate one for $110,187 is for trail amenities and the shelter. This includes a bituminous path connection to the trail from the new parking lot to, for the Public Works Building to the trail. It also includes a shade structure, picnic tables, and an enclosed area for a portable restroom. We believe that these amenities will be a good asset for the community to better access the trail from this facility and provide some safer parking for the trail. And then bid alternate number two is some soil corrections for $83,850. These actually were previously approved with the award of Bid Package 31A for dirt merchants, so that's already been taken care of. And then alternate four for $40,557 is being recommended. This provides some caulking between the joints of the precast double-T roof panels at the garage areas. This will provide for better vapor control and moisture protection on the interior of the building. We are not at this time recommending alternate number three, so it'll just be the three listed. Those alternates total $150,744. That still puts us about $1.3 million under the budget that was established before the bids were issued. So recommending, again, the $4 million in bid packages along with the three alternates listed.
We'll approve. We have a motion and a second discussion.
So what would, I don't understand what heavy-duty aggregate section is. What does that even mean?
That's because of the heavy equipment that'd be used there, there's some need to kind of reinforce the bituminous in certain areas.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Those bids are approved.
Tab 11 in the packet then is the third quarter donations. The first two pages list out the monetary donations. A library received a number of donations, largest ones for the summer learning program. And we also did have some donations to the public safety area or the Sheriff Patrol Division for firearm safety. And then- And then in human services, the adult mental health initiative did receive a donation as well. The third page then gets into in-kind donations, and you'll see those listed there under the fourth page, and then also a listing of volunteer time given to the library. And so asking for the board to accept these donations here today.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. They are accepted. Item number nine on our agenda is commissioners' reports on committees. By now, it should be no surprise who we start with. Mr. Brundt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, I had a relatively light couple weeks, but I did manage to get out and visit County Ditch 77, which several months ago, we passed a resolution to have him remove some trees out of the right-of-way. They have been removed, and it is acceptable for the repairs that have been done out there. A little bit of dirt work to do, but other than that, the trees are all gone, and that issue is resolved. We had our drainings levy discussion after our last board meeting with some county staff and set all the levies for the new, for the drainage systems next year. We had our work session and then the public works groundbreaking ceremony, which I thought went very well. So thank you to everybody that put that together. And that's my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay, on the 24th of October, did have a partners for housing meeting and at our new place down on the riverfront. And then October 25th, it was a virtual thing, but we did have some change order then for the All Seasons Arena we talked about. And then on 29th, we did have, October 29th, did have a work session, so that is a light schedule, too.
Thank you. Andy?
October 23rd, the district meeting. The 28th, I had the NACO FICA meeting. 29th, work session and public works groundbreaking. And yesterday, the TDS strategic planning meeting, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Chris?
On the 23rd, I had the AMC district meeting, 4th, 169 corridor, went in conjunction with a rail plan, which is the metro to Mankato rail plan. Work session on the 29th, public works facility, open, our groundbreaking after that. Yesterday, I had an MRCI workshop and finance committee meeting, and that's the end of mine.
Thank you. For mine, October 22nd, I too participated in the drainage levy meeting. The 23rd, there was AMC District 7 meeting. On the 28th, we had a NACO ag policy update call. On the 29th, I participated in the work session as well as public works groundbreaking. And then on November 1st, we had a PACE committee meeting, and I participated in the EMC board meeting. That concludes today's agenda. We do have a road tour immediately following the meeting. Will we need to recess, or do we need to adjourn?
I might suggest you recess, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we will recess at this time. Ask for a motion to recess with the road tour to come.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are in recess.